Approved in 2006, the type of architectural style that was approved for those two planning areas was the Spanish series. The applicant is asking the planning commission to amend the plan development district and the Acesina design guidelines to allow modern series in those two planning areas. That is the basic amendment that has been sick for. The reason I'm showing Planning Area 5 is that in addition to the proposed amendment, the applicant is also proposing to construct 90 new homes in those two planning areas. He's proposing to build 51 new homes in Planning Area 6, which is this one here, and 39 new homes in Planning Area 8. And they are proposing to use the same elevation that the planning commission approved in 2015, the same elevation that were used in this planning area for the construction of those new 90 homes. The proposed amendment will not include any deviation or relief from the development standards. All the development standards relative to height, relative to lot coverage, relative to setback requirements, and landscaping will be consistent with the original approval of Acesina Development. These pictures show the current state of those planning areas. This is Planning Area 8, and this is the proposed layout of the new development. Here is Planning Area 6. The pictures here indicate the current conditions of Planning Area 6, and the slide at the bottom is the layout, which is, this is a blowout of the layout. And here are the elevation series that the planning commission approved in 2015. The applicant is proposing the same elevations in the two planning areas. And by the way, all of these would be single-story buildings. They are not proposing any two-story buildings. The new proposal consists of four different floor plans, and each of them will have three different elevation types. In your staff report, I did include the sizes of the homes and more detailed specifics on the type of elevations and the materials that has been proposed. Again, relative to the definition of minor amendment in our code, this does meet that amendment. It is minor, given that the applicant is not asking for any new deviations or relief from the development standard, and it does not, it will not change the intent of the original plan development district. He did submit the color materials, and then he also submitted the landscape, which will be consistent with the original approver, approved landscape plans for the Acesina Development. We did receive, the department did receive a letter of support from the master developer and also from the, from the Acesina HOA, all in support of the proposal. Staff is recommending that the planning commission re-adopt the previously adopted MND under the SEQA guidelines and approve the proposed amendment to Plan Development District 231 and the Acesina Design Guidelines, except subject to the original conditions of approval. A question was raised about the state of landscaping in two of the open spaces within the two lots, lots X and Y, and an open space in Planning Area 8. Staff will be proposing a specific, a project-specific condition that will require the applicant to reinstall the landscape and irrigation that will be consistent with the originally approved landscape plants according to the Acesina Design Guidelines. That will conclude my report. This is a public hearing, and I do believe that the applicant did ask to speak to the planning commission, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Questions of staff? Already? Seeing none, then why don't we have the applicant come forward? We'll have 10 minutes to present, and if necessary, two minutes of rebuttal, followed by public comments, if any.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name's Alan Janisch. I am, work with Toll Brothers. I'm the VP at Palm Springs, and the request that is for Toll Brothers to build what we have been continuously building at Acesina for the last five years, I believe, 2014, actually six years, when we had -5 approved with the 128 homes for contemporary elevations, and we, our goal was to then continue building at Acesina.
Have we lost our link? Is he frozen on everyone's screen?
I lost him entirely.
Oh, here we go. Sorry for a second there, sir.
I'm sorry. Did I, am I back?
We hear you. I think staff is going to try to get you back on the screen. If not, we'll listen to you. There we go. Now we can hear you. We can see you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. My bandwidth is a little slow where I'm at. So anyways, Mr. Robertson did cover everything very, very well on what our proposal is, so I do hope that everything was conveyed. If you have any questions, please feel free to answer, or ask them, sorry, no, answer.
Can I find, from staff, is there, are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have one member of the public who has requested to speak, so if you give me just one minute, I will get that individual on the phone. Three minutes, and if you could...
Very good.
Okay, you may begin.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Greg Roberts. I am a resident of Acesina. I also represent the Acesina homeowners on the HOA Board of Directors. Additionally, I serve on the board of the Acesina Neighborhood Organization, which is part of One Palm Springs. Speaking as a resident, and as for many of my neighbors, I support the Toll Brothers' request to amend the design guidelines to allow modern contemporary architectural styles in place of previously approved designs. Acesina is an eclectic blend of architecturally interesting designs. With this building project, existing traditional Spanish and Mediterranean homes will be co-mingled with the Toll Brothers' proposed contemporary home architectures. To maintain Acesina harmony, both visually and aesthetically, as planned, Toll Brothers must ensure that there is some logical delineation between the two very different styles. It is also crucially important that Toll Brothers maintain the community's standards of green space and common area. We pride ourselves on the beauty and landscaping of our neighborhood, and we would expect that Toll Brothers would be held to standards already approved and in place with previous builders and construction. The ask of the planning commission and Toll Brothers is to employ creative design by using green space and common areas as a means to soften the transition of home size and architecture as they move from Spanish to contemporary designs, which are in close proximity. The various neighborhoods in Acesina today make sense from a design perspective. This project must comply with that intent and vision. We are pleased that Toll Brothers has decided to resume building in our community. They are a significant part of Acesina today, and we look forward to working with them as we grow together. Acesina is our home. As one of the country's preeminent home builders, we trust that Toll Brothers understands that it has a responsibility to our community, its residents, and its future homeowners to make sure that Acesina is and remains one of Palm Springs' most viable, livable, and architecturally interesting communities. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
So, Mr. Newell, are there any other public comments?
That was the only public comment request, Mr. Chair.
All right, then. If the applicant is still available, are there questions of the applicant?
I have no further questions.
No, we're going to ask you questions now. Commissioner Song.
Yes, Mr. Janisch, as he was mentioned before, Acesina is an enclave of different architectural styles. Is the Spanish style not as marketable as the modern style? Is that why this decision was made by Toll Brothers?
Well, the decision, yeah, one is the marketability, and the other is the contemporary, mid-century modern elevations are more appealing in the Acesina community, where there are more homes of that architectural style than there are of the Spanish colonial. And our, our goal is to continue keeping that theme going, which has been successful, which has been marketable. So to answer your question, yes, that, that is the main reason, yes.
And, and I take it that another evidence of that is that you're willing to build less homes, because before, with Area 6 and 8, you have about 141 homes, and now you're going to have about 120 homes?
No, the 128 was in -5. That's what Toll Brothers just concluded on building. We just closed escrow on our last home on -5. -1 has 39 home sites, and -4 has 51 home sites, so it's a total of 90 home sites. So we're not reducing the amount of home sites. That remains the same, and the common area remains the same. So we, we are not changing the grading plans or, or track map or anything. We are just continuing to build with what was planned, but just in a different elevation style.
Okay, good. Thank you for clarifying that. So as far as the architectural plans that you have submitted, the revised, the, I'm sorry, the mid-century so-called style, you have submitted that in 2007, correct, for building permits?
Yes, 2006, 2007, yes, that is correct, and, and we do have, and we've actually out of those nine different plans we had approved back then, we have selected the four largest plans to build on these two different tracks. We're not planning on building the, the smaller of the, of the nine plans. We're building the four largest of the nine plans.
And, and how many of these homes were built on the previous phase? One more time?
From what, Toll Brothers, what Toll Brothers built?
Yeah.
128.
Okay. So we're about 13, 14 years later, and it's in the theme of enclave and different compositions of styles. Did you consider looking at a new paint scheme, or color scheme, or material scheme?
Well, our goal is to start with the 39 homes to build out of the four larger plans, and when we get to the 51, we may, you know, depending on the marketability and having to up, as you say, update our plans and color schemes and elevation, on the 51, we may introduce a couple more plans, a couple more color schemes, you know, again, granted through the, all the approval processes. But our goal is to start building right away on the 39, coming in with a successful product, a successful elevation, and, and move right into the track with the, the 39 home sites, and introduce maybe a plan or two as we go forward. But this, this was to introduce the elevations that we want to build on these two tracks and not be restricted to the Spanish colonial, and then maybe introduce more contemporary, mid-century modern plans as we move through the, through the homes, through the community.
Okay. And last question, and more of a confirmation. The plans that you have submitted here for landscape design are the front public areas in front of each of these homes. As far as the common areas or the parkway areas, you already have a design, and you're going to follow that design? Or have those common areas been changed?
The common areas haven't been designed yet. What I've done in the past in the common areas on, on -5, for instance, is I work with the HOA. We come up with a plan. We want to follow what their guidelines are, because they have been evolving and changing as well, as far as drought-tolerant plants and drought-tolerant, using the better irrigation system. So we will evolve with, with the Acesina HOA as well when we submit our landscape plans and get the approval of the Acesina HOA. Just for instance, our lot J and K, where our community is right now, or our, our common areas are, I worked with the Acesina Commission, or HOA, to get those plans approved, and we'll do the same with these as well. And I know that they do have to be relanscaped, because they are in need of, of, you know, update and, and repair.
Okay. Mr. Janisch, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions of the applicant? All right. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Why don't we have, I guess, discussion? Commissioner Song.
I wanted to confirm with, with staff that any landscape design will be submitted to the city for review and approval on common areas.
That is true. That would be true, that they will be required to submit the new landscape plans and irrigation system will be reviewed by staff or by the AAC prior to installation.
Thank you. Having said that, I, I am in favor of the project. I do believe that Palm Springs is made of many different architectural styles, and it does, the market says what it says, but it, it saddens me that the early Spanish revival style does not get reinforced in the Acesina development. But it is a business, so Toll Brothers have a big research department, and I'm sure that they made this decision considering all factors. So that will be my recommendation.
Are we ready for a motion, or do we have other questions, comments? Well, why don't we have that as a motion, then? A second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewin. Any more discussion? All righty, why don't we call the vote?
Commissioner Song? Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin? Commissioner Hirschwein?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Odenzey?
Yes. And that is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. And now I will relinquish my responsibilities.
Moving right along, does anybody need a break? Are we okay?
Break, please.
A break, a 10-minute break?
Thank you.
It's 6:26, so 6:36.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bowen.
Yes, I would like to recuse myself on this item. My employer is doing a tenant improvement project with the applicant. And so out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself and shut off my camera during this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go forward, I just want to say that I have met with the applicant and asked, had a discussion, saw the project in close to its latest iteration, and asked several questions of the applicant that I will repeat in my questions today, so that the questions I asked are before the public.
I also had a discussion with the applicant about the project where he presented it to me, and I was able to familiarize myself with what was the current iteration at that point, but I understand there's been a few minor changes.
And I will disclose the same situation as well. Thank you.
And me also.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yeah, me also.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So the item before you this evening is a request to develop the northeast corner of Bellardo Road and Museum Way. It is commonly referred to as Block B1 of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan, and it is the previously planned location for the Virgin Hotel. So the project consists of a 73,300 square foot building. It is a mixed-use building with a combination of residential, a total of 45 units on all floors, as well as commercial on the ground floor, specifically on the south side of the building and the north side of the building. So that would be the Museum Way frontage and the Andreas Road frontage. There is currently a subterranean parking garage that is existing, and so that would remain, and there is access from that garage to the current grade level. This project has been to the AAC on two occasions, and the Planning Commission had a study session on this matter back in October. The project that you're reviewing tonight is the third iteration of the project design. And since the first or initial application submittal, the project has been reduced in scale and size, and they have modified the ground floor to include retail commercial uses. Specifically, in terms of the reductions, they've reduced the overall number of units from 62 to 45. They've reduced the square footage from about 82,000 to 73,000 square feet, and they've reduced the sixth floor, the size of it, eliminating the westerly wing on that top floor. And they've reduced the size of that westerly wing as well for floors three through five. So basically, it has been shortened and created, and it allows for additional light into the interior courtyard. And so what you can see in this view here are basically, it's a site perspective as the project has evolved. The top left is the first submittal that was received for this application, and that was for the six-story, 83,000-square-foot or 82,000-square-foot building. The second submittal is on the top right, which is a revised, basically a revised design of the exterior elevations. And then finally, the current design, which is shown on the bottom of the screen, which is, as I described it in the previous slide, a reduction of the project and change to the ground floor plan. So to kind of summarize what has changed, this is a new exhibit that was not part of the materials in your packet. From the last review at your study session, this is the design of the building that you saw. If you look at what is being removed from the building, it shows here that that portion on the westerly wing of the building has been removed. And so again, it has reduced the overall square footage and the massing, and has created additional, provides additional light into the courtyard space. So again, this is the current design that is before you, and this is a site perspective, looking from the southwest to the northeast. Moving further up above the building, you can see down into the courtyard and the additional interior light that is now created, or that would be allowed to penetrate through into the courtyard space with the reduction of the square footage. You also see there is a proposed spa on the top floor on the northerly end of that reduced square footage area. Looking at other perspectives of the building, this is standing along Museum Way, facing northwest at a southeast vantage point. So this would be looking down Market Street and Museum Way. This perspective shows you if you were standing closer towards Block A, which is near the Blaze Pizza and the West Elm Building. And so if you're looking down Market Street and Andreas Road, this is the view that you would see if the building is constructed. This is a view standing on Bellardo Road, looking down Andreas Road and Bellardo Road from the northeast, or excuse me, the northwest vantage point, looking to the southeast. And so this is really the view that if you were standing further north on Bellardo from where the park is located, this is the view of the building. In terms of the elevations, this is the west elevation facing the park. And so you can see the, it's kind of in the lighter color area, and the background there is where the interior courtyard space, the elevations of the interior courtyard space. And in the foreground is what you see, kind of the, definitely the more prominent colors on the screen. Those are what is shown on the westerly wing of the building, as well as the pool deck. On the east side of the building, you see the six floors that are proposed. The ground floor is showing a public art location that would be determined at a later time to be installed. And you do have correspondence in your packet as to the idea behind what that space could look like. On the south elevation, so this is the elevation facing Museum Way, this is where the proposed retail space would be located on the ground floor, and then above that, the residential units on floors four through, or excuse me, two through six. The pool deck is also viewable from this side of the building. This gives you just a little bit of an understanding of the concept of the building. As an east-west section cut through the building, you see the five floors on the westerly wing on the left side, and then the six floors on the easterly side of the building. On the ground floor, what you see here, Bellardo at the top of the screen, Andreas Road on the right, and Museum Way on the left. In the purple color along Museum Way and Andreas Road, you can see the proposed commercial retail spaces. And then the remainder, orange and yellow colors, are the residential units. And then the communal space for the development for the residential units is on the westerly side of that ground floor, where there is a lounge and meeting room and restroom spaces. Mechanical equipment is located behind the commercial along Andreas Road, and the project still does include two elevator access points from the garage to the top This is just another view of the ground floor. The second floor, again, it's additional residential units. There is a fitness room you can see here on the west side of the building, and then the interior courtyard space in the middle. And then the clear story space of the ground floor is shown on the top left. The third floor, more residential units, and then also the pool and spa deck, as well as outdoor gathering spaces, the pool cabanas, barbecue area, and so forth. On the fourth floor, more residential units, same on the fifth floor. And then finally, the sixth floor also does contain residential units. This floor has four large suites or three-bedroom units. There, well, all four are three-bedroom units. There is a spa deck on the right side of the screen, which is the north side of the building that I referenced earlier in the presentation. The process for this project does require both the Planning Commission and the City Council review. As I said, this has been kind of an iterative process where the project was reviewed by the AAC back on September 8th and on October 5th, where they recommended denial of the second iteration. The Planning Commission reviewed that second iteration on October 28th, and then the public hearing that we are holding this evening is to review this third iteration of the project. Your recommendation tonight would go to the City Council, and that date would be scheduled at a later time. I did want to present this to the public because it was received since the packet was published, and it does show a new exhibit that was provided by the applicant, providing some additional views of the entry, the primary entry to the project for pedestrians at the corner of Bellardo Road and Museum Way. And what it does show is they're adding some additional landscape, incorporating landscape elements into this entry of the project. And I'm sure the applicant would explain more about that further. Staff provided analysis of the project as it relates to the downtown Palm Springs specific plan. And so we reviewed all of the relevant materials related to the specific plan, including permissible uses, the site planning, the urban design of the project, its massing and scaling, and the landscape requirements in your staff report. We do note that the specific plan requires that ground floor, ground floor uses on this block are intended to be used for primarily retail goods, personal services, food and beverage services, and tourist and related services. The project does include that along Andreas Road and Museum Way. However, they are also proposing residential units on the ground floor fronting Bellardo Road and Market Street. So we do want to note that that is a request of the applicant to allow those residential units on the ground floor. A list of all the uses on each floor is shown on page two of your report. The project does comply with the development standards of the specific plan in terms of its height, its setback, the building's step backs, as well as the parking requirements, which are summarized on pages seven and eight of your report. Staff has proposed findings for the project as it relates to the architectural review criteria, as well as the tentative track map findings for approving a condominium project, and those are provided to you in your report, as well as in the draft resolution attached to your report. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you two sort of fundamental questions before I open it up to questions from the commission. One is, we're supposed to be approving the track map as well as the major architectural or making recommendations on it. I didn't see a track map included in the packet. Is there one?
There is one, and it essentially, if it's not included in your materials, it would have to be provided to you separately, and I can forward that to the commission. But basically, it's a one-lot subdivision, so it wouldn't really change the configuration of the property as it currently is. The lot would remain as it currently is, except for there would be airspace sold as a part of the final map. So the lot configuration isn't going to change, it's really just that each of the units above the existing lot would be for sale.
And then the second question is, because there was a denial at the AAC, a recommendation of denial, materials on this were not reviewed by the AAC, and in fact, they have changed. So the commission's review is both of the structure form uses, and in this case, it would be a review of materials as well. The intention is not to send it back to the AAC at this point in time. So just for you to know that, I would take, at some point, I'll direct us to take a look at the materials, since colors and materials are different than they were in earlier submittals. With that, questions of staff? Commissioner Hirschbaum.
Thank you. Thanks, David. I have a couple of questions around the requirement of the specific plan, in this case, the street level uses. Your staff report says that street frontages on this block are primarily limited to, and then it lists some things. In your mind, what is primarily? How would you define primarily?
It certainly can be used up for interpretation. Primarily would probably mean most uses on the ground floor are retail uses, and anything other than a retail commercial use would not be allowed unless otherwise approved by the commission. There isn't a hard and fast number that suggests that 50% or 51% is considered a majority or primary, primarily, or is consistent with meeting that standard. So it really is, could be up for interpretation as to the extent of what the ground floor should be entirely used for.
And when you're talking about frontage, you're talking about linear feet, or are you talking about square feet?
It would be linear feet.
Linear feet. Okay, so I did a rough calculate. Okay, so when you said most of it should be of these particular uses, does most imply like 50% plus one kind of thing? Is that most?
I would interpret it to suggest that most of the ground floor, if not all, should be retail. And that would be up to the Planning Commission to make the final decision on.
To define what primarily is?
To determine what would be acceptable.
Well, I just did another quick calculation, and it looks like about, and I could be mistaken. and it looks like about, and I could be off a little bit on this, because it was a quick calculation, about 17%, 1/7% of the frontage of the building is currently designated either office, commercial, or gallery. So in your mind, would 17% qualify as primarily?
I mean, I'm not uncertain as to the extent, the number that you arrived at. Is it, is that excluding like alternative or exterior back-of-house spaces? It's just not easy to define it. I would say that there are going to be a number of non-retail--
Davis?
Yes? Can you hear me? Commissioner Hirschbein, can you hear me?
I think we've lost Commissioner Hirschbein.
While we wait for him to return, I'm happy to answer any other commissioner questions.
Are there questions? I have some, it has to do with height and how you calculate the height of the building. Is it at the stair tower end because the street slopes? And there's obviously a difference in the height of the building. Where do you, how do you determine that it's, where is 60 feet? And could you show us that on the drawings?
The specific plan specifies that the height is based on the highest point of that pad. So yes, it would be measured from the northerly side of the property, where the current grade is the highest point.
So it's 60, from the northern side, it's 60 feet? And then it's higher at the lower end of it, of the pad?
I don't know what happened to my, come here, I just--
We were just taking question while we were getting you back. And so I just asked a question about height--
Oh, okay.
--to the specific plan. And I can also ask that of the applicant later. So why don't you go forward?
Thank you. I don't know what happened. I guess I had a little bit of technical difficulty myself. Yeah, I was just, I calculated about 17% of the frontage of the block as either the gallery space or this office slash commercial. And the host has asked you to start your video. Okay, what am I doing here? Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. And I just asked staff if they considered 17% as primarily, under the definition of whatever primarily is.
I would say that you're going to have some extent, or some portions of the frontage to be non-retail. So for instance, you're going to have locations where you have to have trash access, stairwell access. So I'm not sure what the calculation includes, if it does include some of those ancillary spaces that typically are found along a project in a downtown space. But again, it's going to be up to the commission to make a determination as to if this would be acceptable. What you have before you is a request to not follow specifically to the letter of what is in the specific plan for ground floor retail. And if this is acceptable to the commission, that would have to be, that would have to be a call the commission would make. If it's not, then the project would have to be revised on the ground floor to comply with the specific plan requirements.
Other questions of staff? Michael, do you have additional one? Commissioner Hirschbein, can you hear me?
Looks like we lost them again.
Okay. While we're waiting, are there other questions of staff? There being none, I wanted to go back to the height. What is the height of the retail spaces?
You're asking about the interior space of the units?
You've got retail on the ground floor, what is the height of that?
Looking at the building section, the lobby is 14 feet, but the interior spaces, I believe, are less than that. So I would assume that it's probably about eight or nine feet. And I'd have the applicant clarify that in their testimony.
And that's of the gallery space and the other tentative office or retail space on Andreas?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Those are my questions. So there are no other questions coming from the commission at this point? There being no other questions? I'd like to open the public hearing, but I would like to get Commissioner Hirschbein back?
Well, for the moment, I, let's see, for the moment, I am. I don't know what's going on. Is it my internet or something else going on?
It's you, I think it's you, but don't know.
Oh, okay.
Do you have more questions? Because you are the, I think only you and I are asking questions at this point.
I guess the answer is that it's up to the commission to define primarily. And then the other question I have is, if we find, do we need to find that the project is in compliance with the specific plan in order to approve?
Yes, that is part of your findings, is that it's consistent with the general plan and the specific plan. And that would include the primarily finding. So as Mr. Newell mentioned earlier, if the Planning Commission believes that the ground floor is primarily devoted to those permissible uses under the specific plan, you can make that finding. If you don't believe that the ground floor is primarily devoted to those permissible uses, then you would find in the negative, and you would not approve the project based on that negative finding.
Thanks, that's all I have.
I had one more question from Mr. Newell. The AAC, in their denial, basically wanted, am I correct, that they basically wanted a building with a single, with a double-loaded corridor that sat smaller on the pad? And that was, in terms of massing, that was the basis of their denial?
Correct. So the denial was due to the massing as one of the issues, the project not conforming to the architectural review guidelines as it relates to massing, concerns about the size of the interior courtyard, and concerns about the lack of upper-floor relief as it relates to the massing and the architectural review criteria. There were comments about the project not utilizing a double corridor design. So yes, those were suggestions, but that was not what is being proposed.
I understand it's not what's being proposed. So what we're looking at is the third iteration of the project the applicant wanted originally. And in, to some extent, it's new for us. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. There being no other questions of the applicant or of the staff who'd like to open the public hearing? And also, are there members of the public who've called in or would like to call?
No, Madam Chair, the only request to speak is the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Brandy, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. On the height of the gallery, the height is 14 feet, just to clarify that. But the architects will add that in their presentation. A couple of things for quick, the project, as originally proposed in September in front of the Architecture Commission, met all the objectives and standards of the specific plan. Despite that, and in consideration of the concerns expressed by the Planning Commissioners during our study session, and in the spirit of an effort to be collaborative, we have modified the project, reducing the density from 62 units to 45 units. I would like to add that, and want to thank the Planning Commission members for a very clear conversation and communicating to us and the architectural team that what you were looking for, that was very helpful for us, and we feel it is a much better project right now. We also have increased the pedestrian experience by stepping the building back from the public line. The setbacks, coupled with the architecture, which is airy, features a lot of glass rather than straight brick or stone walls, and includes the balconies that break up the facade and help integrate the buildings into the surrounding areas. This also helps to avoid the canyon effect along any of the project's frontages. With these changes, the project remains well within the objective standards set forth in the specific plan, and should therefore be approved by right of zone. This residential building is one important component of the larger and well-vetted specific plan that was approved in 2009. It envisioned a mixed-use downtown development, where the business and the residential support each other, in addition to adding to the energy of the overall downtown corridor. No secret that small businesses are struggling, and introducing a new cohort of residents to the downtown via this project will help sustain the momentum, not only for this project, but for our overall town. Ground floor residential is limited to two main street frontages. As these are the areas which retailers and restaurants find acceptable. Placing retailer restaurants on the west side of the building, facing Bolado Road, puts those businesses at a disadvantage as they lose the primary downtown draw, Palm Canyon Drive. For this reason, the west side of the building is not leasable for retail or restaurant uses. Grid had several discussions with local restaurant owners, who are declined to open restaurants along Bolado Road. Everybody wants to be on or as close as possible to Palm Canyon to justify an investment of up to $1 million or more. We also contacted various real estate brokers who echoed the comments of local operators that they would not be willing to open up there. With that, I pass it on to my architectural team and their presentation. Thank you so much. And David, thank you for a very good presentation. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Mark Kirkard. I'm principal of Design Arc Architects. We've been working out in Palm Springs since 2001, and we're the architects for the project. David, if you could please make Jason Greer the presenter. So as has been stated, this is the third iteration of the design, how it's evolved, and I would reiterate exactly what Michael said. We really feel like this project, as it's continued to evolve, has continued to improve, and that it's actually, we're really, really happy with the way it is turning out right now. I want to just add one thing about this discussion about commercial on-grade, and point out that really what we're here to discuss is how much we have improved the pedestrian experience along the ground level. And asking the board, the commission to recognize that a specific plan that was approved in 2009 had a completely different idea of what retail was going to be happening in downtown Palm Springs. And what we're really asking you to do is recognize that it would be worse to have retail space on the ground floor that is not leased and sitting empty than it is to have an enhanced pedestrian experience that we're proposing here. The country is literally littered with vacant commercial space. And Michael and his team have done, have done all the research. They know who's going to lease and where they would want to lease. And so I just want to bring that out and point that out, that what we're really here to do is to talk about the pedestrian experience that we've enhanced, and whether, you know, this is an appropriate use for this site. So I'll start out with the floor plan. I'm just going to try to not reiterate exactly what David said. But the main thing that we've done and put a lot of emphasis really was on the streetscape, and especially where most of the traffic is coming from. So along Museum Way, moving back towards the museum, we were able to come up with an idea that basically veneered a gallery in front of a residential unit. And Michael already has a gallery owner that's interested in moving into that space. So you really, as you're moving from Palm Canyon back down Museum Way, you're going to get a very good commercial gallery experience, which is part of the art. The other thing is, the lobby, now we've moved the lobby and the lounge around the corner onto Bolado. We see this very much the same as what it would be if it was a hotel lobby. You know, a hotel lobby and entrance is not commercial space in terms of retail experience. This lobby and our lounge that are wrapping all the way around Bolado are going to be very transparent. You'll be able to see straight through those into the interior courtyard, very much like you would in a hotel-type of experience. So the two units that you see there on Bolado, those units actually face into the courtyard. As has been stated, Bolado actually rises as it goes to the north. And those units actually face into the courtyard, and they're actually below the grade of the sidewalk, and with a very large, broad landscape screen in front of it. As you move around to Andreas, compared to the previous scheme, we relocated the trash over onto Market Street, so there's much more in proximity to where the trash is collected at the back of the spaces that face Palm Canyon. That allowed us to make an additional entry, basically a resident entry off of Andreas. It's like another secondary lobby that takes you into the second, where the secondary elevator is, that actually, as has been mentioned, goes down, does go down to the garage. Then we have the bike storage and workshop, as well as another commercial space along Andreas. So we really feel that we've, that the pedestrian experience is going to be quite enhanced all the way around the building. Now, Market Street, we think that the public art piece is probably just as interesting as having commercial space on that street. There's, the back of the buildings that face Palm Canyon don't really have much activity onto Market Street. But Michael is committed that there is one small space towards the south that could be used as a small restaurant, the cafe that could actually have seating out onto Market Street, which would help to activate that. So the real effort that we put into this for the first initial redesign of this version 3 was to really try to enhance the pedestrian experience all the way around the building. And I suggest that having more commercial space on Bolado that is sitting empty with paper on the windows is going to be a much worse pedestrian experience than what we're proposing. The second thing that we did, that we talked, that has already been talked about, is greatly reducing the massing. If you could go up to the third floor, Jason, that would be the easiest place to see that. The wing on the west along Bolado has been moved back by about 35 feet, expanding the pool area, including cabanas. We now have a pool area that's nearly the size of the, what the pool area was for the Virgin Hotel. And we've also lowered that mass on Bolado by a story, which allows the units that are back on, backed up to Market Street to actually look over the top of the building in front of it. And because of the elevation of the mountains there to the west, those units are going to actually be able to get views of the mountains. Not only that, we've greatly widened the oculus, the view, and what lets light back into that courtyard. The courtyard has really gone from what used to be in the original scheme, closer to a donut, where it was, had it just pinched, and it was pretty much closed all the way around. Now it's very open. It's going to get a lot of light and air back into that courtyard. The third thing that we changed is the image of the building. And maybe, Jason, now would be the best time to go to the model views. We concluded, after hearing comments from your previous hearing, that people really liked the Virgin Hotel and the simplicity of it, and the kind of the background nature of it. And so in this version, we have changed the materiality and the color scheme to a much more neutral and background color scheme. much more neutral and background color scheme, recognizing that the residents with their furnishings and so forth, we'd be much better off with something that was much more neutral. So, this is a dissolve between, this is our current scheme, and that's what we had, that was the scheme that you saw last time. So, you can see, it's a very significant reduction in the massing. We're now, where we had had some kind of rusted steel panels, we're now looking at a material that is a cementitious siding, it's kind of in a neutral gray palette, and then we've changed the, maybe move around to the front of the, a more frontal view, Jason, if you have one. We've changed the sliding screens. One of the things that the AAC really wanted us to study was to have the exposures of the sides of the building, whether it's a west, a south, north, to really reflect the sun control requirements, and that actually happened in the version two with the sliding panels. We continue to have those, those are movable in three different widths, and they're actually going to be painted white, but they will be, they'll have a different shades of gray, because we're going to have a variety of different perforated sizes of holes, so that they tend to be more or less translucent. So, that makes it, that'll give it a little bit more of a color, but it's also very subtle. So, we think that this color scheme, along with the materiality, is much more sophisticated, much more background, it's much, I think it's going to make a much better asset to downtown. You can see, we did, was mentioned, we have the three, four larger suites on the top floor, and the north suite there, that is actually a private courtyard off of that penthouse that's on that north side. So, if you want, we have the model, if anybody would like to look at any particular views to understand it, maybe, Jason, let's look at, let's talk a little bit about what we did down at the entry with the new landscape, because that was brought up.
Madam Chair, I just want to note that the applicant has passed a 10-minute timeframe, it is up to the commission if they wish to allow it to continue.
I would move that they continue. Are there any objections from the commission? Hearing none.
I'll wrap it up quickly. I've been trying to move pretty quickly, tried to hit the high points, and I'd like to just let you know that we are available here to answer any questions that you might have. But this enhancement on the entrance, we're using this technique with the landscape architect, Tom Dossi, of cables that are stretched vertically with vines that crawl up them. Those are some of the enhancements that we've done inside of the courtyard, and so, we decided it would be a good idea to soften the entrance, and have, once again, as part of the pedestrian experience, to basically reintroduce those around the structural columns that are floating in front, that are actually holding up the pool deck that you can see here. So, that's what those four columns are. And then, we've also included some linear planters. We want to encourage people that are turning the corner as they're coming down Museum Way and turning onto Bolardo, that they can kind of cut the corner, but we thought it would be more advantageous for the lobby to actually be able to kind of keep people right away from the glass, and I think this, we feel that this is a really good solution for that. So, also, Jason, if we could go, one last thing I'd like to just point out is the transparency. In the larger image at the top here, you can begin to see the people through the building in that courtyard in the far distance, so that will be illuminated, we lit up this lobby. The whole idea is it's a very transparent appearance, so that when people are walking by, they can actually see back into the courtyard, much like you would see into a courtyard if there was a hotel. And then, further up Bolardo, we have a lounge, and also fitness room up on the second floor. People will be working out up on that second floor and being able to look out over the park. So, that's really the crux of my presentation. I don't know if anyone else from my team has anything to add, but we appreciate your time, thanks for letting us run over a little bit, and we're available to answer any questions.
Mark, it's Michael Brown. Do you want to show the north elevation, where the elevator shaft has been cut down?
Yeah, we can show that one. Next one. Yeah, so this is the top view that you're looking at here is the north elevation, so you can now see the piece on the right that's been cut down to five stories with a roof deck on top, and then, we're calling it, right now, we're calling it the Arts Loss. You can see, we've cut down the stair tower at that level, and then, right next to where it says Art Loss down on the street level, that's a new entrance into the courtyard for residents. And that additional elevator that's beyond will be able to be used for move-ins as well. And then, the space that's to the left of where it says Art Loss is basically a combination of a commercial space and a space for the residents to store and work on their bicycles. So, once again, we consider those kind of semi-public, semi-private areas to be part of the experience of the pedestrians.
Are we going to be visible again?
I think you have to unpin the video. Let's see if we can. Can you take the drawings off the screen?
I just wanted to make it clear that during the study session, we were not to share our opinions of the project. So, I didn't have that many questions about the project, I think I understood it very clearly, and I had studied it, but I didn't share any opinion, so I don't know if I agree with the statement that because of the study session, the architects were able to come up with a design that reflected what we all thought. Clearly, I didn't express my opinion of the design.
Are there questions that you have? Commissioner Maruzi, can you hear me?
Oh, you asking me? No, not right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions of the applicant? See if I can get.
Maria has her hand up.
Commissioner Song.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so, a lot of work went into it, I can tell. So, Mr. K, I had some questions about specifically the south elevation. If you could be kind to let me explain what I'm trying to say, and tell you what I read, and then, where I think is problematic. So, on this design, by reducing the number of units, and I think there's a better transition between the corners where you have this cantilevering box, if I can call it, that ends back into the building mass. And you do that on Bolardo Road, where you have the, where the units were taken out, and right adjacent to the new pool deck, now you have this strong corner coming down to the ground, except for the first floor. I don't know if that makes sense to you. You have this, the building corners back, returns back to the main mass, and I think you frame that proportionally well. Where, and you do that, I can read the changes that you have done on Bolardo, on Andreas Road, but when it comes to Museum Way, there seems to be this, still, for me, this awkwardness between the stair tower, the lobby to the stair tower, and then, the balcony to the residential unit. So, the question I had for you is, have you considered bringing that strong sort of corner where the panels come down, have you considered doing that as well, where the stair tower is at?
Can we put that elevation back up, so I can understand, so I can understand your question a little better?
Sure.
The point is, those are south-facing units, and so, they really need the deep overhangs. And of course, we're trying to enhance, we're trying to enhance the amount of outdoor space, the indoor-outdoor space, and so, those deep balconies really are reacting to the sun, to the sun exposure. So, I'm not quite sure, and the elevator tower, the elevator tower really needs to go to the roof for fire department emergency access, and so...
Right, but right between the elevator tower and the big overhang, you have the lobby to the tower, I mean, to the stair tower.
Correct.
And that part doesn't, because the stair tower is so vertical, and because you have the oversized overhang, it creates this unproportioned width of the lobby.
Yeah, we like the proportion to answer your question, I'm sorry, it doesn't, it's not resonating with you. We like the transparency of it, we think, you know, that'll be illuminated at night, you'd be seeing residents going in and out of the elevators. You know, that elevator, by the way, the location of the elevator and the stair is a given, that is built, that particular elevator and that stair is, already has the hole going down through the parking structure into the parking level, and so, the location of those, that stair and that elevator is fixed. We need to be, we need to work with that location, and so, we aren't able to move it to make it wider, make that space wider, or narrower, or whatever, so that's kind of a given, because it's actually constructed already. So...
Is the lobby in front of the lobby, or the landing of the stairway going into the stair tower, is that all glass for six stories?
Yes.
And that's the material you're using to transition between the residential units and the stair tower?
That's correct, that would be correct, yes. That's a gap between there, yes.
Okay, all right. Then, the, could you explain, you said, you mentioned the color change was because of the input that you have received about matching the Rowan building. I don't recall that being the input.
No, no, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, no one told us, as Peter said, no one told us their opinion. We basically, from listening to the testimony and listening to people's comments, we kind of determined, and the more we thought about it, we felt that a, we were not trying to have anything necessarily to do with the Rowan, but what we did is, we made a determination that we should move away from a scheme that had a lot of color into an idea that would be much more neutral, and be more of a background building, that would probably be a more appropriate. So, it was not trying to match another building or anything else, it's just that we felt that it would be lighter, it would be, you know, might not be quite as heavy, and much more sophisticated, and be more reactive to kind of the Palm Springs, Palm Springs' modern history, you know, of more neutrals. So, that's what we, that is what we, that's why we made that decision, not based on someone's suggestion, it was just as we rethought the entire project, that was the conclusion that we came to.
Could I also mention at this time, too, that there was an additional aspect of, it's been very important for us, and we've worked quite hard to make a correspondence between the park across Bolardo and the inner courtyard. And another aspect of what Mark is talking about is to create a better lens, if you will, to see the relationship between the courtyard and the park through a neutral building, rather than a building which requires you to give it more attention than, say, the park or the courtyard. So, it was the strategy of quieting the entire building down to allow primacy to the courtyard and to the park, and to their correspondence.
Which, it's a segue for me about the Bolardo street design, where you have these planters backing to the residential unit, and in the courtyard, you have these planters, but they're angled and they're more energized, they have this sort of playful layout compared to the rest linear of the building, and yet, on Bolardo, the planters follow the rest linear configuration of the building. Have you...
Actually, that was, came from the AAC. One of the things that they had on the initial version one, we had a lot more activity, and we had angles and some faceting and so forth, and the AAC was really kind of encouraging us to simplify and make it more simple, and we really feel that on that north end, the portion you're talking about, that the building, that's where kind of the building comes to the ground, and we feel that having a more simple solution there, as opposed to trying to have more activity, and more, once again, more of the background, it's different inside the courtyard than it is on the other side, it was more appropriate.
You mean on Bolardo?
I'm talking on Bolardo. Yeah, that's where the building, from the public's view, hits the ground, and just to have that kind of simplicity there, we felt was more appropriate than having more activity there with, you know, adding a bunch of angles, so forth.
Okay, and as far as the residential unit on the ground floor, the most challenging unit is the one that is backing to the gallery. It looks like the bedrooms are going to have windows to the outdoor corridor.
Well, one of the bedrooms does, the other bedroom looks out into the courtyard. That unit is going to be, at this point, is going to be reserved for a resident manager.
Okay.
That's kind of a developer's problem, right?
Okay, so, part of the program, is it for, and maybe Michael can help us answer this question, is there a manager or a maintenance, I'm sorry, an office person, or a maintenance facility person, office, or dedicated space for that common service person?
There is ambition that we have a full-time doorman there. The project is basically targeting the baby boomers demographic, and with that, based on research of real estate brokers, they would like to have somebody that is on the door to receive packages and to help the residents along. He would be paid by the HRA, and obviously, he needs to be, or preferably, should be living in the building.
And Mr. Brown, is there an office dedicated for that person?
There is not really an office, other than the community room, that is on the other side.
Okay, and one last question, on the, for example, the office commercial, as well as the gallery, whoever leases from you would be able to do a TI to install restrooms, offices, according to their program, is that true?
That is correct, and that normally will be determined by a work letter that will be received from the tenants, and that will be negotiated with each individual tenant who's responsible for what needs to be installed. The reason why we don't show any bathrooms is every tenant has a different idea about its configuration. On the gallery space, the gallery space is envisioned, and we have already a tenant, more like for events and exhibition space, and to drive then, traffic to another gallery that is not in a downtown area, but satellite gallery, which wants to implement there.
Okay, and, sorry, I have one last question. So, for the design team, the, how important is the glass guardrail at every floor in the interior and exterior courtyard to the design of the building?
Well, we like the simplicity of it and the transparency of it, we're trying to encourage, you know, and enhance the views. That's something that certainly could be, you know, we could, some concern part of, we could have more than one railing type, but particularly on the view sides, we think it's very important.
Okay, and I like, one last question, on the corrugated metal panel, is that a galvanized finish, or is it a, what kind of finish is that?
No, no, it would be, it would be kind... No, no, it's, it would, it would be, it would be uh Kynar fin- Kynar finished. It's painted. Uh, and it's, and it's a, would have, as I mentioned, they're all, they would be white or a slight off-white. And the, the, the ver- the variation is achieved by having different perforation patterns, different sizes of holes and spacing. So they have various transparencies. And that's how, that's how they would have a different, they would look different from uh, from the public viewpoint.
So on this scheme, uh, the, compared to the previous scheme, the different color and creating a different kinetic art form as the screens open and close has been muted now to one color uh panel?
Yeah, it's been muted, but as I point out, they, the, and you can see it in the rendered views is because the, some have more transparency than others, some look lighter and some look, some look darker. So you'd end up having like three, three different shades of kind of a, of a gray. And then when you put them behind each other, they would have, you would have different moray patterns that would be created. You would have, some would be more dense and others. So it's still gonna have some variation in color, uh just by virtue of the fact of the varied transparencies.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions of the applicant? Uh, Commissioner Irvin?
Um, with, with the place that you guys have the public arts, are you guys gonna do art design there or is it?
Well, it's part of the arts, the, the Palm Springs, I think it's called the Arts Commission or whatever, that, that actually will be, be selected by the commission. And the, and the developer has basically given the, them the, the rights to place an art piece there. It's not a piece of art that we're going to design. Michael, you may want to expand on that, but that's generally the way it works. They, they would actually, I'm not sure if they have a call for submissions or exactly how, what that process is. But there is a process in place and Michael, uh the developer has entered into an agreement with them to place art in those two locations. So, so it, it will be.
And uh, we will, we will choose the art, we will come forward the same way with the building that we're proposing here. Uh, we will be in front of the Art Commission. The Art Commission uh will then approve that piece or the mural that would be designed in the back, but we're gonna work together with them. If they have an artist that they wanna pick or suggest, then we will agree together who should, uh, who should uh be doing the work. But the Art Commission has the final say.
Okay.
Other questions? Um, I have some. And I think I'd like you to go through uh the materials because that hasn't been presented. So can you use the slides of what the materials are in the building?
Yeah, we have that. If we could put, get Jason to uh, the presenter again, we have a color board, digital color board.
And I'd also like you to go through the sliders. Um, I'm, I actually am concerned about losing the color in those. So I would like to see what you're doing and what the designs are. I know there was a substantial presentation to AAC regarding those.
Yeah, so here's, here's the, this is the, the color board. So you can see that we've got an indication of the, the movable panel perforated, corrugated there in the middle. Well, after this, we'll go to a view, um, Madam Chair, we'll go to the, we'll go to an elevation view close-up so you can maybe get a better idea how those, how those will look. But um then it's a cementitious siding. You can see the, uh, it's a panelized system. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, that's what would create this uh, the, the end, the end panels that you see, the kind of gray. The idea is that they are in, in three tones of, that are very close to each other, so it's kind of get, get kind of a mottled texture. Um, we showed the glass railings. We have two different color, uh color of stucco. We have a concrete block veneer that's gonna go over the, the uh, the stair tower. And we're, we're have bronze anodized aluminum for all of the uh windows. And you can see kind of the, the uh, the color palette. Once again, it's a, you know, it's a much more neutral, kind of quiet, quieted color palette. Kind of call it the, and let's go to one of the elevations or the, maybe the, yeah, there. So could you enlarge that front, the front westerly piece there, Jason, please? So there, there's where you can see, if you just look in the upper right-hand corner, you've got the, the larger panel. That would be, have smaller perforations, so you see more of the, the painted surface. And, and they graduates down to a, an intermediate one. And then the next one you can see, which looks more, which looks more gray, would have larger holes, so you're seeing through it more. So it's more, you know, it just doesn't, it's not reflecting as much light, so it's gonna look darker. It's gonna look, so that's the idea is that you get, you can see over here when you put one panel behind another, you know, you get a, you get variation of, of those panels, you know. We also, you know, once again, our thought, we, 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 we liked the idea when we had it with the, with color. But the more we thought about it with people, with the, with people moving into these as ownership condominiums and what happens when somebody doesn't like, doesn't like gold or doesn't like green and they're looking out, they've got their, their interior, they wanna use, you know, hot pink and gold and they're looking out and they've got green panels on their, on their decks. So we figured, and, and the more we thought about it, the more we evaluated it, that a much more neutral scheme would be far better in terms of the, um, you know, the people occupying these units. And once again, once you, once you do something in the color, twenty years from now, that color might not be as popular or whatever. So once again, that was why we made that decision. It was based on, on the, on the, on the, basically the, the people living there being able to have a much more, have, have them choose their own colors instead of having us choose them is basically it.
Maybe I could also jump in, in here and say that the ki- kind of kinetic effect that we were after in the second scheme is still here. It's just in a much more subdued way. And maybe um the right kind of way, uh, and it puts the emphasis on the, the greenscape, which was really the intention throughout.
If, if, if the, if the, if the, the commission thought it was more, you know, important, we could, we could propose to paint those in some subtle colors as opposed to having them all the same color. If that was, you know, that certainly would be possible as well to make that a little bit more, a little bit more um noticeable. But still, we really were, we really feel pretty strongly about the um, keeping it in a more neutral palette.
Okay, and the height at the stair tower, the top floor in the back, if on, on Museum Way? And I, I was just wondering if there was any, uh, it's sixty feet on Andreas at the front, am I correct? And then this is a little, a little higher. It gives you room for a larger lobby?
Well, the lobby is actually, see, we've eliminated an entire floor in the middle here because we're dropping the pool. The, we're dropping the pool four feet from the third floor, so that makes the lobby a story and a half tall.
Okay.
And then the, the, the height of this stair, you know, the six, the, the line, the top of the building is sixty feet, just a slightly under sixty feet, starting at the north end. By the time it gets down here, the site drops around three and a half feet. But the, the code ordinance allows certain things to be, to be above that height limit. And one of which is this, this stair tower needs to go to the roof for the fire department for access, for emergency access to the roof. So that height is pretty much set. And it also, the ordinance allows us to have screening of our rooftop equipment above that sixty-foot height limit. So that's the only, that's the only reason that that is going, that, that is going up as high as it is is because of the requirement for emergency access for the fire department.
Uh, uh, the reason I'm asking that is the, is basically the height of the retail spaces that you have um, not just on Museum but also on Andreas because.
Yeah, they're actually, they're actually closer to ten feet. They're not, they're not, they're, it's fifteen feet at the lobby, but as you go around the corner, they're like ten feet in the, in the other, in the other commercial spaces.
And is that, we've al- we've always been told that commercially viable is higher than that and it has a higher.
It would be, it would be if it was much dea- a much deeper space. But since this is what we're, we're kind of calling this a, the gallery, and the gallery is actually quite interested in this, it's a, it's a kind of a shallow space. So you don't need, don't need as much uh height because you're not going deep back into the building. That, that gallery is only like sixteen feet deep. So when you're walking on the sidewalk, you're gonna be looking right at the art. Right, pretty, pretty up close.
And on the other side?
It's the same, same condition on the other side.
Okay.
By the time you get down, when you're down at this corner, down at the corner by Market.
Then the other questions are, are probably more for Michael, which, and they're, they're questions I asked when I met privately with him. Was the ability to do, to scope out the front of the building such that there could be coffee or food eventually there, uh, basically to provide that going into the park? Uh, it seems to me that although you're further from Palm Canyon, there really is the opportunity to have food for people who are using the park. And uh, we talked about the lobby area. I wanted to have Michael possibly talk about what's possible and what could be scoped out there so that we could see something commercial um across the street from the park.
So um, we have, we have food services along Museum Way with currently the House of Pocky uh and On the Mark, which is a deli. And then uh Stalker, that hopefully will open up in the first quarter of next year. Um, uh, all spaces are challenged uh in these locations. And we need to provide uh support there for them to um be able to exist. Uh, as I said in the introduction before, uh, we have spoken to various operators and nobody's willing to make a substantial investment to have uh a restaurant on one of those corners. Uh, I'm certainly open in the future to um use one of those, one portions of the lobby which would lend to it to convert that into a commercial space. But initially, uh, I would not like to propose that because um due to COVID, we will see a lot of vacancies uh along Palm Canyon, which will prohibit us to even find anybody to open in there. Uh, a coffee shop is certainly easier. The problem with a coffee shop is uh in order for Starbucks, uh, when we, we were negotiating with Starbucks, uh, they demanded an exclusive for the whole three blocks. So between Palm Canyon all the way to the Heights Hotel, I'm not allowed to have a coffee shop. Uh, only restaurants, sit-down restaurants uh are allowed to serve coffee or a hotel could serve coffee, but nobody else can. Otherwise, I would have not invested uh close to two hundred million dollars into um the reserve store concept that opened up in the corner on Palm Canyon and Tuckworth. Uh, in addition, uh, we have the Anders Hotel, uh, that has thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. So um, again, also because of COVID, because uh technology has been uh, technology, technology adaption has accelerated so quickly in the past six months um that I think the retail stores uh as well as um even restaurant store uh space will continuously shrink. So in my view, Palm Springs has too many retailers and too many restaurants and we need to see some shrink in there so everybody can uh have a decent living.
I think that, uh, the other, the other questions I had were lease in your CCNRs for the condos, your provisions of for leasing. Uh, you had mentioned to me, and I just wanted to make sure that you reiterate that you're not intending to allow this to be vacation rentals, but to have a one-month lease requirement?
Uh, that is correct. We uh do not want, these, these will be very high-end uh luxury condominiums and we cannot afford to have vacation rentals in there. And we're also targeting um not these units as second homes, uh, but rather for um primary residences so that they this way uh expand the season. So therefore, we are, um, the CCNRs will show that if the, if a space wants to be rented out, it needs to be minimum for thirty days. I might even go as uh high as sixty days, but we will discuss that with our attorneys.
And then the other thing that we discussed, uh, because I'd like people to walk their dogs in the park, that this will be pet-friendly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, those are my questions. Uh, any other questions from the commission? I would close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Um, and.
Commissioner.
I, I have a, another question.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Brown?
Um, I, I want to know, is there any way that we can put up the um, do you guys have the old color scheme that you had uh prior to switching it to the one that you currently have?
We could probably, I think, I'm not sure if we have that uh color board. David might, but we could, we could show you, we could look at the elevation and you could see, you could, so you could see what the colors were.
Maybe if Jason can do the comparison that he did.
Yeah, the ver- the version two to version three. Need to make um Jason the presenter. So this was, this was the pre- this is the previous color scheme for, for what is, was version two. So we had the, we had the kind of a darker rusted color that we um likened to the desert varnish that happens on the, on the uh rocks and boulders that come down from the, the, the mountain. And we had the accent color on the inside, on the inside of those uh frames. And then we had multicolored panels. Um, I don't know if you have maybe an elevation view of that. We had like three different tones, kind of a light blue, a gold and a green.
And, and with, with that color scheme, the AAC, I told you guys that, that they weren't in favor of that color?
This never, this, this, this version is what you saw last time. This version never went back to AAC. No, no, I, I don't think anybody, we don't have any real problem with these colors. It's just as I told you that we, as, as we, as we kind of reach, retreaded back through our process, back through the design process and thinking now that, you know, kind of the higher-end condominiums, we, we lost, we, 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 there are, there are now only one, one-bedroom unit within this project. Everything is two and three-bedroom units. And so Michael's, Michael's kind of heading towards a luxury condominium. And we just, we started to rethink our thought process from this version to wanting to move to something more neutral for the reasons that I stated before, that the people living there might not like those colors. They may have a different, you know, a different idea of what they're, they might want for their interiors and what they might want out on their patios. And so we feel that the more neutral scheme is gonna be more compatible with, you know, the buyers. And, and also makes it more of a background building instead of being, kind of trying to make a building that you kind of really look at me. It becomes, as Dion, my partner, had mentioned, it's kind of more of a background to the park. It's a, it enhances kind of the, the idea of the transparency and looking into the landscape, into the courtyard. Um, so we've just, our, our, our design decisions have evolved, is the answer.
And, and I, I would just like to say, I, I think I've heard Michael say that um he wants to attract a little bit of a younger crowd. And um, you know, the neutral um, kind of, uh, I hate to say bland color that, that's um, that's proposed to us now. Um, I, I don't know if that would be appealing to the, the younger uh crowd of, of which he's trying to reach. And, and also um with the lobby area, um, there was some things that were asked from the planning commission. And um, can you guys touch on the differences and the changes that you guys made to the lobby, um, in the lobby area?
Well, you can kind of see, in, in this version, the lobby, um, let's go back to that, let's go back to version two there, Jason, if we could, please. The lo- the lobby is more or less in the same place, but the lounge, the lau- in this version, along, along the, along Bolardo here, we have more res- we have more residential units. You can see these, these are residential units along the entire length of Bolardo there. See that? That's what's, that's what's underneath it here. So now in the, in the new version, we took the lounge and that fitness that was on, that was on Marine, the Museum Way, and we moved that over to Bolardo, once again to enhance the, the pedestrian experience on Bolardo. And we replaced where it was with the gallery on Museum Way. So that was, that was one of the main, that's one of the main moves that we made is we, we came up with a way that we could get a retail space along the full length of Museum Way. And Michael has a tenant lined up to put his, to put a gallery in there. And so that, that allowed us to move the other semi-public areas, the lounge and the fitness uh over onto Bolardo and allowed us to open that up and, and get rid of, there was, there's five or six residential units there. residential units there that we were able to get rid of on the street. Once again, that was in our quest to limit as much as we could the number of residential, residential units that had any frontage whatsoever on a, on the public street. That's what we're, that was what our goal was, is how can we find locations for commercial space that is viable, that is not going to be sitting empty? You know, the idea of putting a restaurant over here on Bolardo, when, when Michael goes out and talks to his real estate brokers, talks to all the restaurant operators and say, "I have no interest in opening a restaurant on Bolardo." So to force him to have commercial space on Bolardo, in my opinion, is going to be a bigger mistake, a big mistake, because it'll be, it'll sit there empty. It won't, it won't, uh, it won't be occupied. And that, that is a terror, that's the worst. We, we have other clients, that, we have a guy, one of our clients that calls that the vacant retail ordinance. That's when the city makes you put retail there and you can't rent it. So you got vacant retail. And to me, that's a, that's a death knell to a project. I'd much rather have, you know, looking into lounges and lobbies and transparency into the courtyard and have a nice gallery on Museum Way. That, that's where most of the traffic is going to be coming from Museum Way. You go down there and watch people, uh, you know, the, the street to the north is much, is much more low-key, much, much less traffic on it. So anyway, that's, that's our, that was, that's, that was our approach. Then in terms of the actual detail at the, at the lobby, uh, Mr. Urban, you know, this, this was the older version where it just had just regular plain concrete columns, no planters. And our proposal, you know, the, the sidewalks are, the current existing public sidewalks are really beautiful with the, the, the pavers that have been used. And so what we've done in the new scheme is we're proposing to take those pavers from the sidewalk right into the, right into the entry and right into the lobby. So it's a very transparent, um, you know, it basically, the, the glass just kind of separates the public, the public space from the semi-private space. And the other thing is rather than just having, excuse me, these concrete columns, we've enhanced these by a lot, by adding planters to them to make them softer, more approachable. And as I mentioned in my other presentation, is these, these kind of linear planters that step out. It's, it's to allow people to come and, and turn the corner as you, to cut the corner as they're heading over to the park, but, but discourage them. They, they could if they want to. They can whinge their way through here and go up and look right in the window if they want. But the idea is this, this is a, behind those, that glass there is kind of a lobby waiting area where people, if they're waiting for someone to come down to go out to dinner or something, they would be waiting there. So it's, it's, it's very much like a lobby of a hotel. And so, you know, we don't, didn't want people to just kind of necessarily walk right up to the glass, although they can, um, makes it, just makes it a little bit more difficult. And also, we, we think that this really adds a nice pedestrian experience to this, to the, to the corner here. It's a very open corner. This, this, this pool up here is pretty much where the, where the pool was, uh, designed to be for, in the, the Virgin Hotel. That's a fabulous, you know, fabulous location for it. It's south and west exposure and even when you're walking-
I think, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, I just wanted to, you know, ask the, the basic question. I see that you guys are pretty clear and said that you don't want to have retail there. Um, that's pretty clear from, from the comments that you've made. Um, I was just asking about, um, the, the different changes that we asked for, and you explained that to the latter part, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions before this is, I close the public hearing? There being none, the matter, uh, is, the public hearing is closed and the matter is before the commission. And if we can start, we've got a couple of different things. We have the major architectural, um, and in that we also need to talk materials since, uh, we, that wasn't previously discussed. So what, what I'd love to do is start with general comment. And, um, would someone like to start? Commissioner Hirschhorn?
Thank you. Um, I thought a lot about this project over the past several weeks and, uh, I had something prepared to say, but I read, uh, ex-planning commissioner Doug Hudson's email just before the beginning of the meeting, and he really, pretty concisely and eloquently sums up pretty much all of my concerns. And I'd like to enter it into the public record by reading from it. Um, and it-
Do you want to reopen the public hearing so it's part of the public record?
I'd like this to be part of the public record. Um, I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's, it's part of the, uh, staff report. No, it's not part of the staff report, but it's part of the email that we got. Um, so both the inclusion of a gallery space along Museum Way and the relocation of the resident lounge to face the downtown park are progress over the previous scheme, but they are not enough to answer the very grave concerns I, that would be Doug, but I'm including myself in this, and others have, that this project does not offer enough to the surrounding streets. The response that commercial uses are not viable is, to be blunt, highly questionable. Uh, I feel that this developer and this project specifically are not living up to either the letter or even the spirit of the specific plan. Uh, Doug says, and I also did, uh, sat through hours of meetings regarding the downtown Palm Springs project and its specific plan, offering what I felt was solid input in a collegial, collegial environment. The agreement was the, was that the whole project would be a vibrant addition to a bustling downtown environment. This project as proposed is almost the antithesis of that as it turns its back to the adjacent streets. I find it more than ironic that other projects at other far less urban locations in our city are doing more to respond to their immediate environment. With a great deal of our money being spent on a magnificent park across the street with a major police substation providing excellent supervision of the neighborhood, with the art museum, the Illuminaire House, and yes, even Forever Maryland soon to arrive, this block in question should be poised to be much more public in its basic outlook. And this is Doug speaking, but it goes for me as well. Having lived in Los Angeles area for decades, I always kept close tabs on Santa Monica, West Hollywood, and Beverly Hills and how their respective planning departments, planning commissions, and city councils handle development. There was always an implicit, if not stated, understanding that projects in prominent locations, particularly those involving public funds, needed to provide some public benefits. In this case, at this location, more is needed. Creative solutions need to be found for ways to enliven each of these street frontages. Both Museum Way and the frontage to the new park are such prime locations for spaces and uses, uses which take advantage of future vitality. One can see, and, and he's, he goes on to suggest some options, which I, um, uh, would endorse as well. One can see public-private partnerships with the city or perhaps the museum or others providing the mechanism to activate some spaces, which it must be stressed are adequately sized with adequate ceiling heights to make them viable. Uh, and the belief is that the gallery space along Museum Way has neither. The gallery spaces for emerging artists, incubator spaces, farmers' markets, craft markets, community space, meeting spaces, all and more are options. Perhaps there could be a quasi-temporary use until such time as commercial uses become, uses become realistic. Uh, and, and that pretty much sums up, uh, uh, how I feel about the project. And, uh, more specifically, or, or more to the point of being able to approve the project, I, I, I could not, uh, truthfully say that 17% of the frontage of this building equals, uh, 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 what does he say? Primarily retail goods, et cetera. 17% is not a primarily in, in, in any definition of that word. So I, I would not be able to make that finding. So for these and for other reasons, I, I, I'm opposed to the project, that, project as it's presented to us.
Other comments? Commissioner Maru saying?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is the most concert, consequential decision we will make regarding downtown for the foreseeable future because it affects the last prominent building that will be visible from Palm Canyon Drive and also face the new downtown park. The project's architectural firm, Design Arc, is responsible for a number of high-profile projects in Palm Springs over the years, like the Morrison, 803 Palm Canyon, and the Kimpton Rowan Hotel. These have been fine projects, but I believe for the last prominent high-rise that will be constructed in the new downtown, this building must be substantially different from Design Arc's typical design palette. This project has come before the Architectural Advisory Committee twice and was denied seven to zero at their last meeting. I watched both AAC meetings yesterday and their careful analysis of the building's design. Under section 94.04 of the Palm Springs zoning code, the committee concluded that they could not make finding number three because of the proj, the project's boxymassing, scale of the interior courtyard, and generally flat vertical design of the exterior. The reason for its boxiness is that the interior courtyard takes away substantial space that could be used for units and amenities. The interior courtyard is an interesting idea, idea conceptually, but in this case is too tall, narrow, and for the most, for much of the time, dark to achieve the architect's goals. Without the inner courtyard, there would be more opportunity for the architects to design a building that better relates to Palm Springs' unique setting and the public's demand for the highest level of architectural excellence. In addition, you know, I have to say that I agree strongly with what Doug Hudson wrote and, um, what Commissioner Hirschhorn just read. For years, the community has expected city officials to demand the best, most innovative, and distinctive architecture commensurate with our brand. Well, we are some of those city officials that can help ensure that this happens. We have only one chance to do this right. As a result of the same reasons as the AAC and some of my own, I cannot make certain findings based upon the proposed design.
Commissioner Song? Do you have comments?
Yes. Um, I also, uh, looked at this project, uh, for a long time and my, my concern is the project that was here approved before this project, um, is what, it's contractually or developer agreement with the city. And this is a new project in which the permanent housing is being proposed. So there needs to be a balance between a different use, which is more of a permanent housing, and therefore the interior courtyard, having been with natural daylighting, um, introduces, uh, a more livable, permanent housing type of quality to the project. It is true, it's a big box. Um, but based on what the applicant has gone through, I think it is an improvement for the massing design and the type of design that was approved previously. I have the issue of the ground floor being commercial. I think that is, uh, weak. I think, um, having a, a, a commercial component or maybe the city can rent some of the office spaces. I, I don't know, but the ground floor should be used for commercial or public use. And having the walls turned their back onto public streets is problematic. But I think the floors above, by having them reduce the massing on the west front, um, and then trying to keep the density on the other, um, exposures is acceptable to me on how this project has been put together. So if I look at the whole picture about how the project has been processed and the number of, um, provisions that the applicant has gone through, is it that the specific downtown plan is problematic? Are we, how are we giving directions to the applicants when by the specific plan, something of this mass and something of this density is allowed? So that's what I'm struggling with. Um, I respectfully understand how important this project is and how it is the last project. But if I look at the process of what the applicant and the developer has gone through, how do we at this time ask them to come up with something very different? It's what I, what I'm challenged with. Um, and therefore, if I look at the process, I think that the, um, project has evolved as it should. Um, I have problems with the colors. I have problem with the ground floor usage, uh, but I do think that it's going in the right direction.
Commissioner Urban?
Um, I, uh, I wouldn't say I came into it with a, a different, um, idea of how I was going to vote, but, um, I, I would just say that, um, just listening to, uh, the fellow commissioners, um, and just a couple of the questions that were asked, it, it just, it just, the color scheme, I'm not, um, really a fan of the color scheme. They, they said they're looking to attract a younger, um, more audience. Um, we have to make sure that, you know, with that, the, um, the park coming there and also with Maryland, um, we have the right project there. Um, this is something that will affect all of us, um, living in the city. And also, uh, it's a large, uh, project that we'll be able to say that we had a part of. I just don't feel 100% comfortable, um, with the fact that, once again, the 17% for the lower level, that's a big difference between 51% and 17. Um, I, I, I just, I, I would have to lean on some of the more experienced commissioners with, uh, not approving this project.
Okay, it's before me and I think there are three votes. Um, I think the project has progressed in an interesting way. I, I really had a problem with the courtyard last time. I think the way it's opened up, uh, is greatly improved for a housing project. I like the residential use. Uh, I liked the hotel and this comes a little closer to the hotel, uh, but I am concerned about the ground floor uses. And I know I asked a lot of questions about height because I was trying to see how we could get more height at the ground floor level for commercial uses. So I, I do have, I would want to see something more commercial either on Market Street or preferably, uh, on Bolardo. And I had gotten to the point that if the applicant was willing to retrofit the front in such a way that it could become some kind of food service for the park and meet the park that way, I could have, could have been comfortable with it. Um, the muted colors are better for me because it's a big box. And I, I think the muting works better. Uh, so that's, that's where I stood with it. I want, you know, I don't know if I can say it's primarily resident, or it's primarily commercial on the ground floor, uh, without some commercial, some additional commercial either on Market Street or Bolardo. Um, one of the things I think is hopeful is there'll be a restaurant. If Bolardo was activated on the other side, it won't matter as much if there are restaurants that spill into the street. I think Market Street could be activated. I don't know that that's the case right now. Uh, but I am, you know, I do remember how this was sold to us, which was, uh, smaller blocks, which was good for downtown, breaking up, um, the downtown into streets that were activated. And I'm a little concerned that we're not getting quite as much activ- And I'm a little concerned that we're not getting quite as much activation. I'm not the person to make a motion, so is there a motion here?
Madam Chair.
One of the other, one of the other things I have been concerned about, if this is a yes, is trying to figure out how we get to what we had talked about with the Rowan Hotel, which was figuring out a way with the Bollards. It was my request that we saw the map of the Bollards so that we could figure out a way of possibly closing half the street for additional pedestrian access, especially with Marilyn coming. And I do think Marilyn's coming will really activate the area. I don't think it's activated right now, but she was, for many reasons, something the public really flocked to. And I think will help activate the park, so. Anyway, that's my thinking on this.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, staff has presented findings for you on pages nine through 12 of your report. If the commission chooses to deny the application, I would recommend that the commission review these findings and respond accordingly, particularly as it relates to the massing, if that is still an issue for the commission, that would be finding for architectural review criteria number three. As it relates to the ground floor, it looks like the site layout and orientation would be finding number one.
Is finding number one go to the specific plan as well?
Correct, because if, in the opinion of the commission, that the site is not consistent with the specific plan, you would make the finding that the ground floor is inconsistent with that envisioned in the specific plan under finding number one. Also, finding, sorry, Commissioner Hirschman, finding number two, where it mentions harmonious relationship with adjoining development also is applicable.
Okay. Well, since my comments related specifically to the interface between the building and the public realm, the public right-of-way, I'm gonna start out the motion with denial based on findings one and two, and specifically, the inability to find that it conforms to the specific plan primarily with retail goods, personal services, food and beverage services, and tourist services. And then some other commissioners might want to talk about, as far as what we include in the motion, some of their other concerns.
May I speak?
Commissioner Murucy.
When I was looking at what the AAC's conclusions were, they had three major areas. It was the project's boxy-massing, scale of interior courtyard, and generally flat vertical design of the exterior. Do all those come under finding three, Mr. Newell? Or are they spread out to maybe four with building design? This is related to sympathy with the desert surroundings. Is it all lumped under three?
The committee, in reference to their denial, was specifically for finding number three.
Those things that I just mentioned, they all fit under three? Boxy-massing, scaled interior courtyard, and generally flat vertical design of the exterior.
Correct. The composition, well, the building composition could fall into a separate criterion, potentially on criterion number six.
I mean, that's what I had thought, too, but then spoke to the application of neutral gray color and tones. I think that's a little oddly specific about the overall design composition. But, you know, I have an issue with that, too, clearly. I just want to say, as relates to what Commissioner Song was saying, this was our first chance to weigh in on this project. I mean, there was no other opportunity. If there was a process by which the public could have, if this design had been presented to the public prior to being, you know, submitted as an actual project, perhaps a lot of these ideas could have been shared by members of the community that have strong opinions about this. You know, and clearly, I have strong opinions about it, and I would have shared those. So this was my first opportunity to do that. I wasn't allowed to do that at the study session, and so now it had to come out. But I would have been glad to share these ideas before it went started in the process. So I'm sympathetic to the idea that you went through all the right steps, everything you're supposed to do, until you get here, and then you hear somebody like me say, well, I just, your design palette is too much the same as you've done with the other three big projects in Palm Springs. So I feel bad about that, but I, that is my conclusion. So I would second that. If we can add the finding number, well, three for sure. And I don't know if we want to add six. I don't know if we should go that far. Anyone else have any thoughts about that? Commissioner Hirschman?
I think, I'm getting mixed up in the pages. I think three, I think you're going to three, and I think you're going to four, and I think you're going to five. And six, actually. And, you know, like you started to say at the beginning, it spreads out all of those, I think.
Mr. Newell, why is it that, given what the Architectural Advisory Committee came to inclusion, why is it all lumped into three? It does seem to me that it spreads over several more findings. Why was it all lumped into three? I know that was suggested by, you know, Director Fag at the time, because I watched the AAC hearing, but it still seems a little narrow.
Sure. So, you know, it could be interpreted, and it may have been just the discussion at the time that the AAC had was more, the massing was more of a problem, I think, earlier on in the first iteration and the second iteration, because the massing was, it was different than what you're seeing now. So perhaps that was the basis for including it in finding number three, because the massing was really a bigger issue. And so, as well, the commission has two applications before you. There is the major architectural application and the tentative track map. You'll have to make findings if you plan to deny the tentative track map as shown on pages 10 and 11 of your staff report. There's a specific requirement that the planning commission and council make, that the project is consistent with applicable specific plans. And so, of course, the basis would be for you to make a decision that this is not consistent, if that is the direction the commission chooses to go.
I'm trying to find that, David. Can you point me in the right direction?
Bottom of page 10 of your staff report.
Oh, okay, got it. Tentative track map. Oh, yeah, okay. So number one, you'd have to include that finding as not being able to make that finding.
Madam Chair, I'll just point out to the commission, if you believe that the project does not comply with the specific plan due to this issue of primarily certain uses on the ground floor, then yes, you would be finding, you'd be stating that finding number one for the TTM cannot be made. With respect to the major architectural, that would likely fall under finding two, that there is not a harmonious relationship with existing proposed adjoining developments because of that noncompliance with the specific plan. Again, if the planning commission finds that. With respect to color, massing, other architectural items, the AAC found that it didn't meet criteria number three, but I think certain members of the commission who have mentioned this are correct, that if you were to find that other findings could not be made because of the color, massing, and other architectural features, you could make negative findings on those criteria. You're free to do different findings than what the AAC did.
So for clarification, do we only have the tentative track map before us, or is there something else we're gonna vote on?
The major architectural as well.
And where, what finding, are those findings different than the ones?
Yeah.
And is that in the staff report also?
Yes. You're gonna find it, I don't know if the pages are marked, page 10 of 12 starts the findings for the tentative track map. The findings for the major architectural are in page eight of 12.
While he's doing that, I just, for the first part of the motion, I would like to add finding five. One that doesn't, is not met. I'm gonna leave it at that. Three and five.
So we're on the track map now, or are we on the?
No, I'm just trying to finish up the first part of the motion, which is related to the architecture, and then I'm done.
Okay. So we're on the major architectural application now?
So we're back to one, two, three, and five? That's what I'm suggesting.
We should vote on these separately.
Okay, I'm ready to do that.
Can you state your motion?
Well, I thought we're gonna vote on each of the findings separately. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, we'll vote on the architectural, and then we're gonna vote on the tentative track map.
So the first is the major architectural. So, so number one, I could not make the finding based on orientation to open spaces and pedestrian areas, sidewalks. So that would be number one. And then number two as well, I couldn't make that finding because not having something public along that park edge is not a harmonious relationship, in my opinion. And then, help me out, Peter, which ones were yours on this one?
Um, three, which covers mass and some of the other things, massing.
And then?
Five, harmony of materials, colors, the composition of those elements, including roofs, overhangs, structures. It's about design.
Okay. Okay, so that was in my motion, not to approve based on not being able to make findings one, two, three, and five.
And I second that.
And this is the major architectural.
Is there discussion, or should we call the roll? Call the roll. Commissioner Hirschman?
So voting yes is denying the project, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's a yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Murucy?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
No.
And Chair Womack?
No, I can't. Double three and five.
Okay.
Motion passes. Is there a motion on the tentative track map?
Wow, so, okay. So I cannot make the finding number one. Zone is different than the specific plan, is that correct?
No, the zoning is identified in the specific plan.
So then I would include two as a finding that I couldn't support?
Mr. Hirschman, number two is related to the design and improvements of the map. So there's the design of the map in terms of, you know, this being a residential use, condominiums above it, I'm, you know, I'm not sure that that is relevant. Again, the commission only really needs to make, if the commission cannot make all of the findings, then they cannot recommend approval. If any one of these findings cannot be made, and you've stated number one cannot be made, then that would be a denial recommendation.
Right. I was just asking, so it says the design of the tentative track map is consistent with the zone. Oh, so it's the design of the track map, not the, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, got it.
Senator Porter, can we vote on this if we don't have a track map in front of us? And that's a question for Jim Priest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If this were a traditional, well, I mean, because this is a condominium subdivision, you know, maybe Mr. Newell can chime in on this. I don't know if our practice is to typically bring a subdivision map to the planning commission if it's a condominium subdivision. Perhaps Mr. Newell can comment on that as a matter of practice.
Yeah, so typically, we do have condominium maps before the commission and then city council for final decision.
I think based on staff's report, you can make the decision without actually having seen the map, although, again, that's a choice that the commission will have to make, whether it's comfortable moving forward or not, without having seen the actual map. And again, just to reflect on what Mr. Newell had mentioned earlier, again, if you have concerns about specific plan compliance for this project, finding number one could be made in the negative. And number two, I tend to agree with Mr. Newell on that one. That's really more the design and improvements of the map. It would be finding one if there's specific plan concerns.
And the question, let me just ask the second question. If you think there should be more commercial and you're approving this map, and you're approving the units, the residential units where they are in the ground floor, and you don't believe that conforms, then you should vote no? It's a question because we're looking at both, we're but looking at both. I have no problem with the residential units. The question is, are there enough commercial units?
I don't know whether you can parse it out quite that much, being okay with the residential and not with the commercial, and still saying that the map is okay, because ultimately, this is for the entire project.
Right, that was my question.
Yeah, right. So I would recommend, then, if you don't believe that the project complies with the specific plan, that you deny the tentative map, similarly to what the commission did three to two with the major architectural.
So the tentative track map doesn't go to? So the tentative track map doesn't go to building design, is that correct?
No.
And it goes to uses. So I think Chairwoman Womack, what I believe we were trying to clarify is that the ground floor usage, if the, according to the specific plan, if the usage is for commercial, and then the floors above that could be used for residential, in this case condominium, the tentative track map will state that. So therefore, because the current design has residential on the ground floor, we would have to deny the approval.
Okay, okay.
If that was the case?
Sorry?
If that was the case, in which, for example, for myself, I can't approve it because on the ground floor, it should be for commercial usage.
Okay. So I'll make that motion based on number one, not being able to make the finding.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Call the roll. Now, yes is to deny.
Commissioner Hirschhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin? Vice Chair Marutse?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Yep, one, two, five votes. Yep.
Thank you. If Commission? Yes.
That your recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council for decision.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask staff something?
Oh, before we finish, yes. Ask staff, and I have one.
It's about this, and it's regarding the email I read from Mr. Hudson. Is there a way that that email can be forwarded on as part of the discussion with Council?
That email will be included as a part of the materials sent to the City Council.
Thank you.
Before we finish, what I would like to do is, however the City Council decides this, I would like to make a recommendation that the City Council take up the matter with this parcel of how to partially close museum way for pedestrian traffic in, for So in the event that they don't agree with us, that's still something I think they should look at. Commissioner Marutse?
Mr. Newell, in the minutes, I feel very strongly that the statement that I made be transcribed in its entirety and presented that way. I don't want it like it was in the minutes for the Architectural Advisor Committee to be so brief. Can we do that?
Vice Chair Marutse, I think our standard practice is to include a summary of the minutes. If there's specific actions or specific comments that you'd like us to include, I certainly could do so. I would just request that it be submitted to us.
I can submit it to you, but my reasoning, I think, is, goes beyond just this project. And so I really would like that to be in its entirety, and I can provide that.
Thank you.
Is there any objection to the comment that I wanted to forward regarding the closing of at least one lane of museum, figuring out a way to close at least one lane of museum way in the event of events or increased pedestrian traffic?
I have no problem with that.
Is there some question about the specific plan itself? I mean, if it ultimately is decided by the Council that they don't think the amount of commercial is necessary, doesn't that require some sort of a change in the specific plan, or just they can overrule it?
They can, I think that because the specific plan didn't define the word principally, I think the Council can make that decision. I don't know if Jim Priest agrees with me on that.
Yes, I would agree with you, Madam Chair. I mean, the Commission has made a determination this evening, based on your findings, that it's not primarily permissible uses on the ground floor under the specific plan, therefore there is not specific plan compliance. The Council may take a different definition of what primarily is, and may find that it is in compliance with the specific plan. That will ultimately be their decision.
So they would have that, and they would also have the architectural decisions?
Yes.
We're only making a recommendation to Council?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yeah, this is a comment, on a project as complicated and as important of this scale, when the AAC has comments and they deny the project, isn't it prudent to have the entire design team spend this much time revising the project and therefore go back to AAC so that they understand what changes have been made? Or otherwise, we get a brand-new design with the old comments that were made on two or three previous design versions?
It's not, it's not in the way our statute is written. And we can't keep sending people back to AAC.
No, I didn't mean we sending it back, I mean the applicant, you know, to have closure with the body that has reviewed a design that they were not in favor of.
What I think happened was the AAC might have continued to work with the applicant on this project, except they couldn't go beyond two meetings.
Ah.
And so they had to take a decision. The same would be true of us. We could have sent it back for more study, but we would at some point have to make a decision.
Right. And it comes back to me because I also was in favor of limiting to two reviews, so this is where it didn't work out perfectly.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate, I get the problem. We're reading comments from a project, it's not the project we're reviewing, essentially.
But we often see, we often see projects changed between AAC and Planning Commission.
Right.
Somebody accepts the comments of the AAC and their major revisions from what they saw.
Right.
And we may see someone who does, in this case, what Mr. Braun did, which decides that the PETA or the plan that he had was the plan he really wanted to bring forward, and he has a right to do that.
No, I'm not denying his right, I'm just thinking out loud about the process.
Those comments can go along, you know, the concerns can, if you could forward them to Director Fag when he comes back, and possibly, we still have discussions regarding changes in the way we do things and the AAC does things. I'm going to move us along. Does anybody else have comments on this? We have no unfinished business, no new business. Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments, are there any? Commissioner Marutse?
I just want an update again on Tova. I know there was something about the city, I wish you'd just hear from Mr. Priest. I'm putting him on the spot here.
Well, unfortunately, you did put me on the spot, and I don't have any information on Tova, but what I can do is I can look into it and I can get back to the Commission on this.
Yeah, I'd just like to know, because we had heard several months ago that there was going to be some enforcement action with the city requiring, that they do, they actually, the city would do the demolition and then, I don't know, charge the owner or something. But I'd like to know, it's been months now, and COVID can't be blamed for everything, and I think this could move forward.
I'll look into it and I'll report back to the Commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Song?
Yes, is there any update on the terms of other, of our commissioners? Because I would really like for the City Council to extend an invite for the commissioners who are with us longer, or is that all news?
The terms were extended through the end of the year because of COVID. I don't know what actions they will take in terms of appointing people, given that COVID is going to be with us a while, and has intensified and will be with us a while longer. I do believe that there has been some discussion about going forward with appointments, but I don't, it would be an appointment of, be a meeting of the entire City Council, and I don't know how this fits into their schedule right now, given all of the emergencies that we have had.
And if Commission is willing to stay longer?
We have two Comis, I don't know if we can, Mr. Priest, I don't think we can ask those questions here, can we?
I think it would be best if we were to agendize that for later meeting, if you wanted to have a full discussion on this issue, yes.
Thank you.
So possibly if we can agendize this to our next meeting. We have no City Council liaison, the planning director's report?
Just to let the Commission know that we are finalizing the 2021 calendar for your meetings, so that will be sent out to you all. And thank you for all your work this year, and in light of our circumstances, it's been, obviously, an unusual time for everyone, and so we appreciate you being tech savvy and joining us on Zoom, as much as we'd like to be in person together. We do appreciate you continuing to serve on the Commission and the good work that you do. So thank you.
Can you talk about the items that are on City Council that are Planning Commission items?
The City Council tomorrow night will be considering the Tower Market denial that the Commission had. The City Council last month directed the applicant to work with the Subcommittee of Council Members, and so the Council Members met with the applicant, and so we've created a list of conditions based on those recommendations for consideration by the City Council. So that will be reviewed tomorrow night. The Council will also consider the DAP project, the campus expansion, tomorrow night at their hearing.
And does your report on that contain the one concern that we have regarding pedestrians crossings and safety?
It does, and we've had the city engineer review that. The one item, that would be an item that the Council will have to take up, because really, the only safe crossing that would be appropriate there, in the city engineer's view, is a traffic signal. So with that, the Council would have to consider whether or not to impose that requirement, and so that is discussed in the report.
Thank you.
So just to have it clear, we do have a second meeting in the month of December?
That's correct. We have three items lined up for your next meeting on December 17th.
Can you say what those items are?
Yes. It's the Agave Affordable Housing Project that you reviewed at the study session on Stevens and Palm Canyon. It is a, the Living Out project that you reviewed previously, so that went to the AAC this week, and so it will be back before you again next week. And then, lastly, we have a time extension request for a cannabis business. So those are the three items.
Thank you.
And Living Out went back to the AAC, and that tape is available if people would like to look at it. There being no more questions, I will adjourn this meeting until next week, Wednesday at 5:00.
Chair, Commissioner Irvin has a comment, I think?
I was just going to say that they switched the website around also for the city page. If you go to the city page, the website has been changed, and also the app is available as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Lowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a point to understand, next Wednesday is the 16th, not the 17th. Which day are we meeting on? The 17th or the 16th?
We're meeting on Wednesday, and I'm reading.
That's incorrect, sorry. It's the 17th. It's Thursday, the 17th. It looks like we have the day wrong on the adjournment. So it's Thursday, December 17th.
Thank you. My calendar will change. Thank you all very much, and I will see you, we will see, we will join together again next week, Thursday. Good night.
Bye, guys.
Night.
Good night.
Night.